To the flag of the United States and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a minute to show that all members are present for Jim Tomsky. I'll start with fall commendations. We have one person here right now for cross-country. Tom, would you like to stand up and speak on behalf of your athlete?
Well, sir, we've got Julia Dobner here today to give her combination for the state cross-country meet, and this is her fourth year in a row, which I think is quite an accomplishment. So I'm proud of her. Happy to have you give her a combination.
What grade are you in, Julia?
Um, I'm 11th.
11th grade, fourth year. That's awesome.
Yes.
Oh, congratulations.
And thank you for representing our maybe we could squeeze the board together and get a picture. Thank you. Strong word.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Wonder if maybe you could get in the middle and we get the board members to kind of get in here and while you can display your
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations.
Oh, we also have a commendation for Callie Metzler. She represented the girls swim dive team at the state tournament this fall. Ben Hallberg, he was on the boys soccer team, the section finals, I believe. They took second place in sections finals. He was also the conference goalie of the year, I believe. And Cooper Knoll, that key is the representative from boys soccer team, section finals, and that he was a first-team All-State. We also have awards here for Sue and Don. Tom Mardola and Sue Van Goozer for completing phase one, two, and three of the school board workshop series.
And does it say four, two?
One, two, oh, I'm sorry. One, two, three, and four. I'm moving on. We have citizen comments. Citizen comments, we have four people signed up for citizen comments. But just like everyone to be aware that citizen comments, we respect data privacy laws and prefer that we do not use names. And if you are order and use names or students or faculty, you will be asked to stop your citizen comment and we will just stop whatever you're saying right there and we'll shut it down. Um, the school board, we just listened to what you have to say. We did not comment on what you have to say. We listened to what you were going to comment on, will digest what you have to say, and we'll discuss it at a future meeting or at a committee meeting. We ask that you try to keep your comments to approximately three minutes. Not gonna like stop you right at three minutes, but close to three minutes as possible, please. We have Corey Wallace first. Corey?
Hi, am I able to speak from here?
Yes, that's fine.
Um, I'm going to read this and I would have to be really careful to keep names up because I did write it with, so bear with me. I'm Cory Wallace and I have a child at the high school who's a nightmare. My child was just honored as a student of the month from the art department. And one of the strengths mentioned was his ability to provoke new ideas and thoughts, question and question techniques and ideas used in art that would challenge even an experienced artist. I want to thank Princeton Public Schools publicly for developing and fostering these inquisitive, challenging, and thought-provoking characteristics in my child. These critical thinking skills are habits of being a tiger. Princeton's habits of being a tiger also include characteristics of pluralism, being able to evolve, and being unthreatened by differences. My kid is different. He challenges gender constructs and societal expectations for appearance. And this challenges the comfort level of many of the people that are around him. This doesn't mean that he's harmful, nefarious, or innately bad. He's not a threat. My child is also transgender, while the majority of experiences that he has encountered are synonymous with habits of being a tiger. This transition has been met with a lot of unempathetic, fear-based hate and a lynch mob-style community response rooted in misinformation and bad intentions. I want to thank the district and the high school admin for their commitment to support civil rights issues and for their objective support in navigating these situations. I also want to extend an offer of my support to the district in accessing resources, information, and facilitating opportunities to expand awareness for LGBTQ plus youth in our community. If there's anything we can do to facilitate or support, please let me out.
Thank you. Thank you. Tanya Sprudy, okay. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry if I get emotional over this. But I just need to say to everybody in this room, there has been a lot of hate in our schools and in our community. And I have something to say. I have a chance to have a child, a child. I have raised them from birth the same way other people raise their children. They are kind, caring, loving, smart, and a great role model to their younger siblings. They are honest, hardworking, sincere, and are selfless when it comes to caring for others. My child has had hard times growing up and has shown strength that most adults can't even fathom. My child took a step towards their true self one day and came out to me. How terribly hard that must have been. A person who you have known one way your entire life and to speak up and tell them one of the most honest truths. And face it, imagine for a second that you were in this place. You have to stand before your hardest critic and tell them your biggest, most terrifying truth and fear their judgment, not knowing if you will be hated, cast away, or loved. How terrifying would that be? Now think if you were still a child and had to do that. We cast hate so easily and don't see the amazing person behind these hateful acts. It is easier to hate if you can't see their face. I ask parents, what makes your child better than mine? What makes your child more deserving of love, respect, safety, and to live life without fear of harm? If your child came out to you and told you they were gay, would you tell them you are not worthy of love? Would you tell your child they do not deserve to be safe, live life happy, and know love? Would you turn your child away and not support them? Would you show them hate and judge them? No, you wouldn't. As a mother and father, you show your child unconditional love. You teach your child they are worthy and deserve life, just like any other child. They deserve happiness and love. Your support, your child, they deserve happiness and love. You support your child and you stand behind them regardless. Children who identify different than your own children are still human. They deserve love. They deserve life. They deserve safety and they deserve support. I would give up everything I have for my child. That includes my idea of what I thought my child should be. I would give my life for my child's life, and each and every one of you would do the same. Please continue to stand up and do the right thing. Don't turn your head. Don't look away. Don't walk away. Don't let your personal agenda and views cloud your judgment. We need to protect our children from violence, hate, and bullying, whether they come in a form of another child or an adult. All children should have the right to be who they are. They should not have to hide in shadows and hallways in fear. They should be able to hold their heads up, stand tall, and be proud, be a leader, and be a voice. And if their voice is not heard, then we have the responsibility to be a leader and to be their voice and protect them. I say it again, I am a proud mother of a transgender child. And I love them unconditionally, and they deserve life, love, happiness, and to live without fear of harm, just like each and every one of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Rome, May?
Yes, I give you my questions. I was gonna give you what I'm gonna read to and I got very ready to go off to work, so. Standing before you this evening, I see people in this community that have for many years, that have been here for many years. I have lived here since I was eight and I'm now 42. I'm very disappointed to see the bathroom policy change that was recently instituted at the high school. Thirty years would have this been ago, would have this been acceptable? No. When does it end? These so-called progressives are a very small percentage of the population. Why are they catered to? I read through the excuses the lawyers have come up with, such as trans students may dehydrate themselves, so they have to use a bathroom that they self-identify with. What about the safety and health of the children who are now uncomfortable with the policy change? What happens when they begin dehydrating themselves out of fear of assault or rape? Who's going to take responsibilities for the negative effects that happen to children because of a few kids? Parents don't want to say, too bad, so sad, you're a boy or a girl. Then the governor made it illegal for parents to seek help for their children because they labeled it conversion therapy. Notice that Obama okayed this. Trump took it away and Biden instituted it. We're in a fight of good versus evil, and I know what side I want to be on on Judgment Day. Are you willing to answer, are you willing to answer for doing nothing when the day comes? Those who sit idly by are just as guilty. Rather than spending tax dollars on attorneys to help make excuses for children that truly need help or perhaps some love and attention from their parents, why don't we spend these dollars on an attorney and try to figure out how we, how to stand for what we believe in, and that is that Princeton still has morals and values? If there is nothing to be embarrassed or ashamed of, why was the decision hid when it was made? Why wasn't it sent out to a mass email, in a mass email? Do you plan on opening faculty bathrooms for kids that don't want to be subjected to the stupidity? Kids that may be afraid of leering or predatory behaviors from others that are now allowed use restrooms that are normally used? Why does some minority group praise racism because he, she, it cannot have their way about something, and someone is reprimanded and forced to comply? You may think that it is a stupid statement, but 30 years ago, this bathroom situation, we've been seen as ridiculous. And another 30 years, complying with the minority requirements, where are we going to be? Next, we will have adult sex predators identifying as 16-year-olds, so they have access to prey on others. Self-access to prey on and others self-identifying as dinosaurs. This is all ridiculous and it needs to be stopped in its tracks now.
All right, thank you, Jerome. On Donovan, there are Jay. Donovan Wallace and G Wilson.
I'm a student at Princeton High School, and I am transgender. That means that I use the men's bathroom, and I identify as a man. I go to the bathroom that I identify as, and by law, I'm allowed to do that. When I use the bathroom, it is nothing special. I use the bathroom, I do my business, and leave. I do not interact with the people in there, and there's been rumors about us around the school, standing up and lifting our leg and beating our head off. This is, I understand why that may be concerning, and if it's believable, I will say that that's not true. We use the bathroom respectfully, and it's not, we don't even, if we could, we wouldn't mention that we're transgender. We do our business and leave. We are still the same people, and we go about our day as it is. In the hallways, we are harassed, we are barred that, I am, I've had people screaming in my ears, they have been rammed against lockers. It creates a dent in our day. I have not been able to do my homework in fifth, I've not been able to pay attention in class, when all I want to do is exist. I want to do what I need to do, and I want to be myself. I don't attack people for using a wrong name, for the wrong pronouns, although I appreciate the respect of it. I want to be respected, and I do not want to cause a problem. I have not caused a problem with the bathrooms, and in the most simple terms, I'm not looking for anything special. I'm looking to be allowed to do what I need to do, to eat safely, to walk safely, and to use the bathroom safely.
All right, thank you. And that is it. Jay? Sorry. I don't know if you guys were together on that one or if you were separate. So Jay Wilson?
I am a student at Princeton High School. I am in ninth grade, and I am a transgender student. As Donovan mentioned, we face relentless harassment in the hallways. We are yelled at, we are called names, we are called slurs in the hallway, and all we want to do is go to school in peace. In the bathrooms, we go in, we do our business, and we leave. We don't want trouble with students in there. We don't want to prey on students in there. Um, we want nothing to do with the other students in there. The rumors that he mentioned have been spread are certainly not true. We don't use the urinals. We go into stalls and respectfully use the bathroom and then leave. I am not asking for people to change their ideals. I'm not asking people for, for people to go out of their way to use the correct name and pronouns for me. I'm not asking people to talk to me like they would a man who is not transgender in the bathroom. I'm simply looking for respect from people and for people to let me go about my, my business in peace.
Thank you. That is the end of the citizen comments. Thank you all for coming, taking the time out of your night to speak. I'll move on. Board member, member committee reports. We'll start with Chad.
I had a finance committee meeting before this, and
Yeah?
I had agenda planning last week and then finance tonight.
Eric? Yesterday was long-range planning, planning. Today was finance committee meeting and then world's best workforce.
You know, I also had agenda planning the other day, and we had long-range planning last night. Talked about a lot of facility needs that we're hoping to fix with the referendum that we obviously can't, can't do that anymore. It's gonna be interesting. Yeah, and then agenda planning and world's best workforce, Sue?
Um, I had a C executive meeting, and then last week, the C general meeting. And the two speakers, Senator Carla Nelson, who is head of Senate Tax Committee, and and a demographer from the state of Minnesota that broke down a little bit about the census. And I did forward both of those videos to you today, so they should be at the top of our email list. I know they were both, they're both interesting, the
The demographer piece is really interesting because all of the boundaries for voting for your legislatures are changing.
Yeah.
So it was, that one is, if you only have time to look at one, that one is, it's really the best one. Couldn't even begin to go through all the statistics. And then I was also at long-range planning meeting last night, as well as we talked about facility needs that are now still needs, emergency. Front and center.
Thank you. Don?
I had a community meeting, coffee with Ben, and then Rome's best workforce.
Student council, are they on?
No, I don't believe our student council representative is with us this evening.
Okay, so we'll move on to the superintendent.
Well, first of all, Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. Board, I'm very thankful that we have reached this pinnacle time of our school year. It's been a difficult, challenging year. I think we entered the year optimistic that it would be much better and easier than the year before, and I think if you talk to any one of our 500-plus staff members, they will tell you that it's probably quite a bit more challenging. So I'm just so thankful to, to our, our great staff members and teams and all of our students for the hard work and dedication that they've shown and resiliency over the, the last couple of months, and then they have some much-needed time off. I did prepare a statement regarding the transgender bathroom issue that was discussed tonight that I think it's important for me to share with the board. There, up until recently, schools across our country really did not have direction on the, the best way to address this. Recently, there have been many court rulings that do provide clear expectations, and that's what this statement is, is to you about, and I've shared some of this documentation with you in the past. Some community members have asked why school officials allow transgender students to use bathrooms that align with their gender identity. Simply put, school officials are required to. The Minnesota Court of Appeals recently issued a decision holding that the Minnesota Human Rights Act give transgender students the right to use restroom and locker room facilities that align with their gender identity. The federal courts have reached the same conclusion based on their interpretation of Title IX and the equal protection clause of the U.S. Constitution. Erasing any doubt from the status of the law, the U.S. Supreme Court recently rejected a Virginia school board's appeal. In doing so, the Supreme Court left in place the lower court's decision giving transgender students the right to use restroom and locker room facilities that align with their gender identity. The school district is obligated to follow the law, which is now well-established in our state and across the country. If you have concerns about the state of the law, you may choose to make your concerns known to elected officials at the federal and state level. Those are the appropriate venues to address concerns. Although it can be frustrating at times, school officials, including school board members and school administration, have no authority to change the law. Instead, we must follow the law as interpreted by the courts. And I can provide any documentation, and you know, people can talk about, we can discuss policies and those kinds of things, but the reality is the board has no discretion to have policies that don't follow the law. And that is some recent developments that I think it's really important that are known. I also want to share with the board what our mission is, and just continue to remind folks of what that is. Princeton Public Schools is an innovative leader in instruction, developing in every learner the ability to succeed in an ever-changing world. And every time I talk to you about our, our mission, I point out that there's only one word, right? That is in our mission that every single letter is capitalized, and that is every, right? And we, when, when we talk about our game plan, we talk about, yes, we're an institution of student learning, but we need to have the prerequisites for student learning to occur and have conditions for learning to occur, which means that the task to ensure that our students feel safe and respected, free of discrimination and harassment and hate. And we're committed to doing so, but all of these issues are extremely complex. And I believe deeply that our schools are a small microcosm of the greater society. And every day, we have about 3,500 students enter our, our walls of our schools, every single one of them different. And that's the, that's a beautiful thing. And we also have 500-plus staff members, certainly a representation of the greater society. And I think most of us in here can agree that our greater society, our, our local community, our state, the federal government, and our global world, there are very, there are many, many complexities. And many of those complexities fall into the school. And we you know, we're a school. We're a school. Where learning should take place, and I'll just give you a recap of the last week. You know, much of last week focusing on a global pandemic, issues related to divisiveness and polarization with what strategies we use or don't use in our schools related to the pandemic, falling into a federal scare of terrorism on TikTok and chasing our tail for multiple days with law enforcement to ensure that all of our kids are safe. Right? And, and now we're talking about some of the issues that we're talking about here today. Very complex, but we come every day committed to make a difference in the lives of our kids. And, and, and every day, we fight, we fight all the stuff that's out there. All the divisiveness and polarization, and we work really hard and are committed. So when our kids come to school, we can do school. And we keep having all these distractions, and we keep trying to fight it, but I tell you what, it's tough. And we're not perfect, and nobody's perfect. It's not a perfect world. But we are ultimately in the business of human development, developing humans. And all humans, I think we can agree, aren't perfect, and we all make mistakes. We're all on a journey of continuous improvement, trying to get better every single day. So I apologize if I kind of went off kilter there. I wanted you to know what, what the law is. And I want you to know that it's challenging, right? But we, we still maintain our commitment to make a difference in the lives of these students. And I tell you what, we're blessed with the fact that we, we had a short break at Thanksgiving at time. Now we have a break now, but you know when things are gonna get tough? In January, February, March, and April, and May, when we don't have a two-week vacation to look forward to. And that's when we, as a board and administration, need to, need to really be there for our people. Our kids and our staff members, because I'm worried. It's, it's been tough, but it's gonna get tougher, and we don't have breaks. And, and we need, we need to keep people healthy. You know, our staff members and our students, their mental health, because I tell you what, a lot of stress going on. So anyways, I'll end my remarks. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year, and you know, entertain any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions, Brian? I'd like to entertain a short little break if you guys would like. I know some of you guys might want to duck out. It's kind of awkward to duck out of meetings. Three minutes, is that all right if we take a quick little break?
Sure.
All right.
Because what, what's next?
Taxation. Is everyone ready to get back at it?
So.
Just want to give people a chance. Truth and taxation. Michelle?
All right, if we have public who is watching this later on, please give me a call if you have any questions on the slideshow, because the board's heard most of this, and they are the only ones here. I'm gonna skip through quite a few slides here. We know all this. We know all this. We know that. We know that. First interesting slide is revenue disparities. Uh, this tells us how many school districts get more money than we do per student and how many get less. So the state of Minnesota puts out a nice disparity spreadsheet, and I go through the whole thing, they count, counting school districts. It's moved by three districts, so three districts more now get more revenue than Princeton Public Schools. Uh, it's still at 47 that receive the same amount, but I can tell you for sure Cambridge will move next year into the category of more. And then there's 31 schools that receive less than.
Is that because Cambridge has their unoperating money?
Yep, so that'll that will help their daily, their per student rate out. Uh, this is our end of year adjusted. Okay. How our enrollment looks in total. As you can see, we were kind of flat in 16, 17. We jumped up really well in 18. We maintained that a little bit higher in 19, and then we came down in 20. And do you see that big drop in 21? The good news is, is twenty-two will come back up and might be a little bit higher than twenty-one, but it won't be lower based on the current enrollment information I have. So we are taking a hit on enrollment. The other piece of enrollment that affects us is those coming in and those going out. The blue line are those choosing to leave our district that live within our boundaries. And as you see, that's still a stair step up. And we in two thousand nineteen was our highest point for those choosing to come in. And then we kind of came back down, but we're still higher than two thousand eighteen. So I, I honestly don't know what the answer is to that piece, but that's what the data is showing us.
No, the, the outgoing, that does not include homeschools, right?
Correct, these are only kids.
It's only going somewhere, other districts.
Other districts that record in Mars, correct? So we will have, Emily would have to speak up and tell us how many homeschoolers we have.
We have over three hundred.
That have left in the last year, is that three hundred homeschoolers?
No, total, total. I, I'd say within the last um, year and a half, we probably increased that by about a hundred, maybe a hundred fifty. We have a lot of K through eight that have gone to online since we don't have that as an option in Princeton.
So there you go. The school district levy is on a separate sheet. I'm sure you all reviewed it. These are just how our school taxes, these are the normal graphs we put. There has not been a significant change in any of the percentages. So there you go. Our proposed total increase is two percent, which is very little in the levy world. There were no changes to any levy formulas this year and debt service, of course, we're required to do the five percent. This is interesting. We had elders run the tax base numbers. So you can see our tax base from nineteen went from eight to eight point eight percent increase to a nine point five. This year was a ten point five percent increase. NTC also increased, this actually jumped a little bit more, which is eleven point one, that's net tax capacity. They take out some things on that one. And then this is the new impact of levy for Princeton residents. I just chose three in, three of value levels. And I did have two phone calls from residents and they were not from the Millest County side. They were from the Sherburne County side. And they saw significant jumps in their value. So overall, from two, twenty twenty, our tax levy has gone down thirteen, over thirteen percent. It's actually gone down more than that. In a couple of years before that, we were paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home was at seven hundred and fourteen dollars. And we are now at four eighty-five. So the tax base has grown. But with it, if people had a significant increase in value, if they were at a hundred and fifty thousand in payable twenty-one, they were paying five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And if they jumped a hundred thousand, which there's more than a handful, I think, that jumped a hundred thousand because I was, got to see a few people's tax statements. They went from five twenty-eight to eight sixty-nine. So even though that category went down significantly, because they jumped value, they ended up paying more. So those are the tapes of phone calls I'm getting. And I told them that they need to, you know, they can't do anything about their value now, but they need to pay attention in March and April and go to their hearings at the county level. And then the rest of this is the whole property tax piece, the changes, what changes market value and then all of the property tax programs. So any questions?
Real quick, those are city residents already. Back a couple of slides, city Princeton residents or is that?
That's all residents, that's all school district.
Okay.
Yep, we're talking our school district boundaries. So they could be in Isani County, they could be in Millest County, Sherburne County, Benton County. They have four counties.
Are there any questions for Michelle?
Just if you hadn't had a chance to read that article in the Union Times, we tried to capture the essence of the finance piece. And I know that if we do a school board evaluation next year again, I don't, we haven't decided that, but let's remember, one, the question that they says, do you, what are you doing to inform the public on school finance? Let's remember that we got, we've been doing some things.
Clip it out, put it on Bolton.
That was an excellent article. So easy to understand. Yep, I mean.
Well, Michelle helped a lot with it and you know, we did have consultation from.
That was excellent.
Yeah, it was good.
It was good. I don't know if the right people read it.
I was gonna say, hopefully people.
Well, that's the tricky thing is I, it's hard to get people to read or stuff and to pay attention for stuff.
But we try.
People, it seems like there's more value in reading comments on social media that are not grounded in any facts at all, people will give that more credence than actual.
Did you put that article on the Princeton parents, the parent, our parent Facebook page?
Uh, no.
Did I make sure it got to the bottom?
Will, I mean, we'll, we'll do it Tiger Times, I think we're gonna try and get one out tomorrow. We'll add that in there too. We can keep pumping that out in different places.
Michelle, do you have to touch on the levy on this or are you good with what you did?
No, that was the detail. It hasn't changed finances in multiple times.
Did you want to approve the agenda? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion made by Deb, seconded by Chad, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I oppose, just approved, discuss an act on previous board meeting minutes. We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as read. We have a second? Motion made by Sue, seconded by Eric Minx, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, meeting minutes are approved. Consent agenda, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So. Second.
Motion made by Deb, seconded by Sue. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I opposed. Since it just approved. First, I'm sorry, school board compensation. Information, school board compensation, Michelle? Yes, and this is you?
Well, I'll, I'll take it. We just put that on there to remind you that generally we will have the board or on our compensation at, at the organizational meeting. So we wanted you to have information and to be thinking about that. If that would be something that you would want to modify or change. We have certainly pushed that off to a later date if you weren't prepared to make that decision at the organizational meeting, but it will be on the agenda.
Could we send this policy to policy because these committees are not correct? And they were correct last year either. And they're still not correct. We don't have a certified negotiations or that's why.
No, we don't. Is that list not correct here? So could we send this to policy and get it corrected? Oh, maybe we pulled the wrong one.
Well, let's, let's get that to policy and safety.
All right. Is there any questions on that?
Is there a policy meeting between now and January?
No.
No, I think the only thing that's.
They're usually the third. Are you guys the third Tuesday?
Because it has to be active on it.
Well, I don't know that because we, we, you can set the compensation, I think.
And we can set the.
We can straighten that policy out later.
I thought we.
I thought we did it.
I thought we did it last year because they weren't right last year either.
I thought so too.
So I don't know.
Emily, are you listening?
Yeah, I heard. I'll take a look if I can find the right one.
You, you might have grabbed the wrong one or where we're at with that.
Okay, yeah, I can pull it down.
We probably don't, I mean, we know what committees there are, can it just change? Do we have to, I don't know.
Yeah, it can change. Or at the organizational meeting. We'll, we'll just change it to
matter.
To match the committee.
Got that, Emily?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, first reading the policy summary of changes, Sue.
Well, we, we did this back in the night's work, so I, I had to like refresh my memory. I don't think there was anything there that's huge. The fund balance policy, we continue with our ten percent. Just made a note of that otherwise it was pretty much just some few changes in wording and things like that, so they're all there. Most of your questions?
Any questions on policy? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the action portion, do we have a motion to accept the twenty twenty-one levy paid twenty twenty-two as presented? Motion made by Chad, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Deb. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call starting with Don.
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Eric Stramberg, yes. Eric Minx?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
All right, the resolution is approved or the levy is approved. There's no additions to the agenda. Future meetings are listed below, organizational meeting at six o'clock January fourth. With a motion for adjournment. Motion made by Eric Minx, seconded by Sue. Is there any of all in favor?
I.
All right, meeting is adjourned.